Continue on the agenda and I'd like to recognize Senator Yamashita on Resolution Number 173-32.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I ask that Resolution Number 173-32 be put on the third reading floor, and I ask to be able to speak on it briefly.
Yes, Senator, may proceed.
Madam Speaker, this is simply a resolution that tries to summarize all of the efforts that the Guam community, the leadership certainly before I got here, took to ensure that the Guam voice, all of the families, the Guam businesses, were included, respected, and regarded as the military buildup proceeded. The reason why I crafted this resolution, Madam Speaker, was because of the start-stop, start-stop, start-stop movement with the military buildup actually building up. And it seems that people were saying that the Guam community was not supportive and was not interested. And all along, the people have been very interested. And leaders, as yourself, simply wanted to make sure that everybody was engaged, that everybody had an opportunity to help make decisions, and that everybody was at the table. So this starts with discussing the Executive Order 2006-10. At the time, Governor Felix Camacho put together the Guam Civilian Military Task Force. And from there, lots of work, data collection, conversations were being held. And the resolution then goes on to describe bills and Guam First Commission, advisory councils, and how a lot of effort has been put forward through various leadership capacities. And then it resolves that we ask, that we urge the U.S. Department of Defense to provide the information needed by the Government Accountability Office. It's simply a summary statement that says, "We've always been here wanting to do what was right for our people, and we wanted to be sure that our voices were heard." You know, Madam Speaker, I had the opportunity to attend GUASA. And I'm trying to remember exactly what GUASA stands for.
Guam United Alliance for Security.
Okay. Guam United Alliance for Security, maybe Association, in Asia, right. And, thank you. And so, at this roundtable, it was very packed. It was a very small room to begin with, but it was packed of tables. And in this room were people of position, whether they were Department of Defense, whether they were previous commanders of different war theaters, whether they were parts of think tanks. And GUASA was instrumental in bringing out these people to the island so that they can firsthand hear the voices and see the island of which Congress, the Department of Defense, were making decisions about. And so, for about two days, a few of us in here sat there and listened. And it was very interesting, because eventually, when it was their turn, the military's turn to speak, they write out, admitted that the stop-start-start-stop movement of this military buildup was fully their responsibility. They write out, admitted that because reports weren't being done, because the communication wasn't as it should have been, that that is why. And so, we had some legislative staff members from previous legislatures who kind of smiled and said, "We had always wished that if we had the kind of control that people think we have, then things would be a lot different." But we don't. And so, the point, though, is that GUASA's out here, was out here, and they are now writing up a report in what they've heard and seen, and what they think should really be done to support Guam as she does her part in deterring aggression, defending freedom, and promoting stability in this region. And Madam Speaker, I learned a lot. This certainly is not an area of strength of mine. But one of the things I learned in sitting there and listening to these experts was that this part of the world is a very critical part of the world. Currently, there's a lot in the East, that were, the Middle East, that everyone's talking about or paying attention to. But this part of the world, with China, with North Korea, this part of the world, people know, those who have been involved in campaigns, in war campaigns, and theaters know that very seriously, the nation needs to pay serious attention to our corner of the world. And most certainly, because we are Guam, they understand that we are a very important piece of the puzzle. And so, at least GUASA was committed to representing our voices. And I haven't gotten any write-ups or reports, and hopefully, those will be coming soon. So again, Madam Speaker, this is simply a resolution that attempts to summarize all the executive orders, the bills, the commissions that previous legislatures, previous governors have penned, have voted upon, and have represented our people and their quality of life through. So I look forward to the conversation on this, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
On the resolution, I recognize Senator Duñez.
When I start this, Madam Speaker, good afternoon. And thank you very much, Sisios Massi, for this opportunity to rise in full support of Resolution 173-32. Madam Speaker, I had the distinct honor of being the Public Safety Chairperson as the aforementioned executive order that was discussed by the retiring speaker, 2006-10, the EO, or the EO, executive order placed, and setting up the Civilian Military Task Force. And you know, Madam Speaker, while that condensed timeline was very concerning for our people, I know that at least the final documents that Public Safety put together was a combined effort from all public safety entities of close to $1 billion that would be required to be able to prepare Guam for that very tight timeline that was proposed in the original military buildup. And you know, Madam Speaker, perhaps we would be sitting here having the Northern Courthouse built, which was one of the major proposals that actually almost went through within that time after the Public Safety Conference, one of only two committees in the Civ-Mil Task Force that actually had a full-grown conference here on Guam, bringing all the officials from all over, you know, Washington and other places to be able to discuss the potential buildup and the realization of it. Moving forward, Madam Speaker, you know, as the retiring speaker, the good author of this resolution stated, in the recent GUASA conference, the on-again, off-again issue was dispelled by at least the contractor that made the representation at this public meeting, that the military buildup for Guam is not a matter of if, but a matter of when. They have determined, they've made the determination that this is going to happen. And Madam Speaker, what I thought was very beneficial, and I think those of us that were in attendance thought was very beneficial, was they actually kind of welcomed the fact that there was a redo on this. Because there was a realization that there are other partners within this region that need to step up the plate and take responsibility for assisting this region and its security. Australia was mentioned, and if you looked at the map, they were putting flags on soil that formerly weren't being looked at from the original buildup perspective, when maybe it was a little bit hasty on the first decision. They also discussed how Japan was certainly going through some changes, in particular where some of the adjustments would be made there, that they would still have the air power capabilities maintained with the new airfield and other establishments that were still be in Japan to be built up. The CNMI governor, Governor Enos, was there. And there was very healthy dialogue with regard to spreading out some of the regional opportunities with regard to this repositioning as well, Madam Speaker. So it was a very worthwhile conference, very informative. And as I said, if, as the author of this resolution and the culmination of putting all the efforts to include this legislature on two very important resolutions that this legislature has passed as well, supporting the efforts, and understanding the need to balance it, though, Madam Speaker, that it was really, really a good outcome. And I think the white paper from the GUASA conference that was held is going to reflect that. And I think that this resolution will also go a long way in supporting that effort, Madam Speaker. So just in closing, as I said, with regard to this bill, Madam Speaker, down the line, we're going to be discussing a bill, Bill 181, which is going to propose to borrow millions of dollars for our infrastructure, that I understand and do support, although it's going to be a rough road. And this bill actually, as the presentation that was made by Waterworks, is the first of three potential efforts to go to the market to borrow money. Maybe, Madam Speaker, just maybe, if there is a record of decision in 2015, and with our continued support to understand this balance has to include Guam, maybe Phases Two and Three won't be necessary. Maybe like in the first Civ-Mil Task Force Assembly for Infrastructure, there was no question in terms of who was going to have to bear the brunt of such a large effort, Madam Speaker. So I commend the author once again. I certainly continue to rise in full support of this effort, primarily for the reasons of putting together all of our efforts and culminating with this resolution and marching forward, knowing what is on the horizon after I have received recent updates, Madam Speaker. So with that, I thank you for the opportunity, and also, once again, commend the author for a wonderful resolution. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the resolution, Chair recognizes Senator Ogden.
Sisios Massi, Madam Speaker. I'm going to make this fairly quick and brief, only because not only was testimony submitted in the committee report, and I commend the sponsor for putting together an excellent committee report reflecting the concerns that were raised during the course of the public hearing. Madam Speaker, when we look at this relative to the people of Guam's consistent and steadfast support, I think we've seen that repeatedly for many, many years. At this very moment, we have about 600 of our men and women from the Guam National Guard who are presently deployed in the combat zone in Afghanistan, preserving that freedom that all of the U.S. Armed Forces member continue to provide, not only our nation, but in this case, the people of Guam. And they need to be recognized for that. I stand up in support of this resolution because it highlights Guam's continued support. But I also stand up recognizing that there are certain issues out there, Madam Speaker, as we move in the direction of this military relocation, certainly whether we agree on whether, in fact, the military should build up. The question is, what is the approach? And the approach is going through this entire NEPA, Environmental Protection, process, and making sure that the concerns of our people in this community are heard. And one excellent example, Madam Speaker, is some of the, perhaps, the concessions that were provided as a result of our people sharing their concerns back in 2010. When you talk about Paget area that the military decided to yield to the people of Guam, or if we want to say, a specialized group of individuals who decided to come out and be vocal about that particular location, they requested for unimpeded access to Paget. And that was one of the concessions provided by the Department of Defense as it applies to the military relocation. The other aspect, I recall very distinctly back in 2009 and 2010, was would it be possible for the military to not expand its land footprint? That was another concession, again, that was yielded by the Department of Defense in terms of looking at the military relocation, net zero gain in property. So in other words, if they needed to acquire private property in exchange, they would have to yield to giving up some portion of their property so that there will be zero-sum gain in terms of their overall property composition. And I bring those up, Madam Speaker, because it shows that despite the desire of the Department of Defense to expand and to relocate some of the Marines to Guam, that when the people of Guam step forward and share some of the concerns, that this is a process that requires, certainly, the whole community, in this case Guam, and the people of Guam, that some of the requests can be yielded to and granted. So I stand here acknowledging that as we go through the Mariana Island Training and Testing, EIS review, which is going to take place over the course of the next two and a half weeks, that it is an opportunity for our people from Guam and also the Mariana Islands to share their concerns as it applies to that environmental impact statement. When it comes to the draft environmental impact statement, which is projected to be released not later than the end of the first quarter of 2014, then I encourage our people to continue to come out and share their concerns as it applies to that draft EIS, Madam Speaker, because the NIP, which is the Mariana Island Training and Testing, will be all-encompassing with the Mariana Islands and some of our shorelines, as well as our waterways. But as it applies to the Guam military relocation, the draft EIS that should be released, if not by the end of the first quarter of 2014, is the EIS that will directly apply to the footprint here in Guam. So I encourage our people to get actively involved, share their concerns, and let's see what we can do to ensure that we're able to work together. So at the end of the day, whether it's taking care of obligations, that we can work in addressing some of those not only financial obligations, social implications, economic impacts, and some of the other issues that have been brought up in the past. So I stand in support of this resolution, and I commend the sponsor for moving in this direction. But I also recognize, Madam Speaker, that there will be concerns. Despite supporting this initiative, despite having 600 of our men and women in harm's way in the combat zone this very day, which truly exhibits the patriotism of this island and this community, that certainly there are going to be issues that the military relocation, that the Department of Defense hopefully would look at considering in terms of making sure that the quality of life of not only the DOD personnel, the Marines that are going to be relocated, but most especially, the quality of life of our people here on island can be improved and enhanced as a result of the military relocation. So I stand in support of this resolution, Madam Speaker, recognizing that certainly we need to work together through this entire process. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator. On the resolution, Speaker Panglinen, you recognize.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly have been an active participant in the discussion and the debate in our community since the beginning of the military buildup. When we first started it, the meetings that they had in the community were called scoping meetings. And there were meetings to kind of provide information to the community and then see the reaction the community would have. You know, they kind of scoped it out and see what they can get away with, you know? But what has resulted in that, Madam Speaker, of course, is an engagement of our community that was unprecedented. And I want to thank, you know, the military for how they carried it out, which sparked the concern of the community, the interest, the passion, the fervor, the scholastic studies that all went in by our young people, are not only the history of our island, but the future of our island, so that we didn't take it for granted anymore. We didn't take it for granted that we had, for example, significant cultural sites on Guam that were endangered and threatened by the military expansion. We kind of assumed that they've always been good stewards, and I give the military a lot of credit. A lot of the enhancements and the preservation of some of our cultural resources have been enhanced by the protection of the military and the policies of the federal government. So it's been a positive relationship in some of those areas. But we also saw that what they wanted to do, in the manner that they wanted to do it, became questionable whether or not it was a positive way, whether that was the only way that we can achieve contributing to our national security and the enhancement of world peace in the Asia-Pacific theater was that way. And so, from the scoping meetings, to the community talks, to the engagement, to the EIS hearings, we saw a groundswell of concern by our community, not only from the legislative body, but in that respect, I think the legislative body correctly followed the community in this respect. And unprecedented in thousands of comments being submitted during the EIS process. And the military, again, once, I got to give them, you know, first, they just went through the process, they went through the programmatic agreement, if you recall, of how do they allow themselves the greatest flexibility to implement their plans and get away with following NEPA policy? And that's really what it was. But we all got engaged in that, and we did what we could, and we scaled back the, what I would call discretion that they can have in terms of following NEPA guidelines and the preservation of our cultural resources, and what they need to do to contribute to those as we go about preparing our community to make our contribution to peace in this part of the world. So the comments, while generally I agree, in resolutions passed by this body ensured that we've all done our share, and we continue to engage to see how much more we can provide without overwhelming ourselves from both a social, political, economic perspective that does not diminish our future as a people and as a distinct community and group of people in this nation of ours that is no longer white or black, but it's now white, black, brown, yellow, it's a rainbow, that we all have distinct contributions to make in preserving our identity as individual peoples in our great democracy and republic, and that we are stronger for that than we are if we all just went out there and painted ourselves white, and we all became the same. Because we're not. And the interests and the concerns reflect that diversity. And that diversity does not divide us. Ironically and oxymoronically, it unites us, you know? Biracial is now the largest racial category in the United States at this time. We're no longer black, Italian, Irish, white, we're biracial. And trying to meld that and ensure that we know what portion of bi we are in our race, in our biracial ethnicity, that that is important for us and for the nation, to understand, to tolerate, to accommodate, and to build upon for the next centuries of this great democracy and republic. And so, Madam Speaker, I understand the desire and the intention to continue to move forward on this. But we also, as the good author mentioned, kind of have to chuckle at times, and you, and me, and others, that we have single-handedly turned national policy with regards to the military buildup on Guam, that we have singly, single-handedly, and collectively reversed national defense, bilateral treaties, and so forth. But what we have done is if we have coalesced the concerns of our community, put them in writing, articulated them, presented them to this representative hall of the people, have it passed, and presented to Congress. And this is correct, and I agree with the author, that this kind of is a compilation of all of the actions of this body. And in almost every single, and I don't think that there's any, in almost every single resolution or support and articulation of the policy of our community with regards to what our contribution will be to national defense and world peace, that they've been uniform and unison, and that our voice has been one voice. And so, while I looked at the resolutions and the executive orders that have been, are listed in here, I noticed that there was one resolution that was passed by this body that was not mentioned in here. And so, I wanted to present to the body to just add that resolution that was passed during the 30th Guam Legislature, and to add another whereas clause, and it would be on line four, page, line 20, to add a new resolve clause right after the foregoing resolve, whereas clause, I'm sorry. And whereas these concerns and others were once again raised in unison in the Guam Legislature Resolution 275-30 passed by the 30th Guam Legislature. And if that should do it, then the resolve clause would also, once again, resolve that the legislature thus hereby reiterate and request attention to the unresolved concerns of the people of Guam presented to Congress in Resolution 275-30. And so, this, I believe, completes the action, the official actions of this body and what has been passed by this body articulating the concerns of the people of Guam with regards to the military buildup. And so, I'd like to present that amendment at this time, and then after the vote, continue to speak on the resolution.
On the amendment, and one is dependent, of course, on the other, which is on page four, line 20, to add a new whereas clause, and then simultaneously, for the resolve clause is the reiterating, of course, what was on 275. So on those two separate, but they will be voted as one. Hearing no objections, so. Speaker, you may continue.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the other amendment I'd like to make is on page five, line five. And I'm trying to dig whether, you know, I've forgotten a little bit of English, but I, is, that could be correct, I don't know, but I just wanted to ask, is spilt or spilled? Do we want?
On page five, line five.
Line five, after capita, to have spilled, S-P-I-L-L-E-D, or spilled also, correct English, I think it is. It is, right? Yeah.
With a T?
No.
Okay.
It's correct, right? Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure. So I'm fine with that, Madam Speaker. The other amendment that I'd like to just add is right before that, on, sorry, on line one, where, beginning from, you know, the foregoing page, page four, the last portion of that, and accommodate a significantly higher military presence on our island. And, you know, again, the issues resolved, while we spoke it in unison, I don't know that that is, that is in unison. But we all, the thing that we are in unison is to accommodate additional military presence. And so, the significantly higher, to me, kind of, you know, kind of just strays a little bit from what is unison and consensus. I think everyone who's opposed to military buildup and the articulation of it realizes that at some point, we're going to have, that we have, we want to, and the community would support, you know, needed military presence. So I would just, to accommodate the needed military presence on our island rather than significantly higher. Okay?
Okay. So on the amendment, without any objection, so.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And so, once again, Madam Speaker, I think that, you know, the other, the final amendment I would like to make, because I see the reference in the resolve clause on section, on page five, the resolve beginning with line 15. And that's where I said, you know, that we've been able to change national policy all by ourselves out here, and we've been able to bully the U.S. Senate into changing their position. But the start again, stop again, really is, has nothing to do with what this body has done. We have done a good job in articulating the concerns of our people, but the start again, stop again, has been the U.S. Congress and their insistence on following the GAO report and requiring of the Department of and requiring of the Department of Defense the needed information that Congress feels they must have, and they will have, in order to provide the necessary opening of the spigot to not only give us the Japanese money that the Japanese have already turned over and deposited in the bank, but the additional appropriation needed to complement the Japanese money in order to ensure that we move forward, and that once we start, we continue moving with regards to the military buildup. The military buildup is not a two-year thing or a five-year thing, it's a 20-year thing. And so, we, they want to make sure that whatever we start, that we're going to consistently provide the resources to ensure that, you know, we don't end up stopping in year five and not having the best utilization of those dollars, and that we don't put in missile silos to defend, against missiles that don't exist, you know. And so, I would just like to, to make a technical amendment to also reference the GAO report in the title, and be consistent with that resolve clause. And really, that's, that would be my final amendment, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so.
Yeah, just to, to ensure that we also, you know, tell the Congress, you gotta resolve that issue, and, and, and in terms of moving forward on the military buildup, and that's what's gonna open the, open the spigot, is resolving those issues. So, would be to reference the GAO report in the title, consistent with the resolve clause.
So then, it's on the title, then, which should be on page one?
Right.
Then to allow then for legal counsel then is to reference the GAO report.
And the needed, the need for the information to Congress?
Yes.
You know, as requested by Congress, not, not our, our, okay.
Okay, so on that amendment, no objections? So, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you, and just want to say, Madam Speaker.
Okay, is there anybody else who would like to speak on the resolution? There being none, Senator, would you like to close?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I thank everybody who has spoken and made this an even better resolution. The, the beauty of the type of world that we live in on our island, the beauty of being a part of a government that allows for democracy, has allowed us, this community, the leadership, the families, the people, to discuss, to disagree, and to make situations better. And so it is because of that that we are able to be the people that we are, to open up our arms, but at the same time to say, we must take care of ourselves as well. And so, Madam Speaker, thank you to everybody for the comments. I ask for everyone's support on this resolution, and I ask to put it on the voting file. Thank you.
So the motion then to send Resolution 173 to the third reading file without any objections, so. Speaker Pangolino, you're recognized on Bill 35-32.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to move to that, Bill number 35, that, there's a few.
As introduced? I don't have here as amended.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to, can I just have a, a one-minute recess, Madam Speaker?
Yes, I, we will have, take a minute recess. Speaker Pangolino, you still have the floor?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, there's an amended bill that was, that we wish to present, and we're getting that copied at this time, so I'd like to go ahead and, and move to the next item on the agenda until we have that prepared and, and ready for the members, and then we can come back to the bill.
Okay, thank you very much, Speaker Pangolino. So we're gonna move on to the next bill, which, yes, so, my speaker, can you come up and cover, please?
Madam Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to, to place 74, Bill 74-32 LS, and I, we're, we're passing out a copy because this will be as substituted by the Committee on General Government Affairs, I mean Operations and Culture Affairs, and further substituted on the floor by the author. So the bill is, the new substituted version is coming around, so.
No objection? No objection, so.
So, continue. What I'd like to do then is to really kinda walk everybody through this, so then everybody will have a better understanding. So, anyway, so solar power has been, of course, touted for its environmental impact, but now it has a new role, which is, in this particular case, will be helping the educational system. School districts across the country are turning now to solar power to cut their electricity costs. So with the money that they're saving, they're also able to retain then more teachers and programs that they're currently being faced with any type of, type of budget constraints. So as a bonus, and what this bill plans to do here is that some schools then now, which are starting to use this, solar installations, are actually starting even to teach their, their kids about renewable energy. Can you please give a copy to the speaker?
I have one, go ahead.
Okay. Power purchase agreements, which we're gonna be calling PPAs, have made it possible for many schools to greatly reduce or even eliminate upfront costs. So this bill then actually proposes that concept. PPAs are arrangements in, where a property owner, like a school district, allows a solar services provider to own, install, and maintain a solar array on its land. The school then would, will agree then to purchase the, the power that's generated from the solar array at a fixed rate for a certain period of time, and that these power rates are often cheaper than conventional utility service. A fine example, and I'm really glad that this actually has happened here in Guam, in March of this year, St. Francis School entered into a 25-year agreement with a renewable energy provider. The school expects to pay 23 cents per kilowatt hour for the first year. At the time when St. Francis installed the solar energy, GPA rate was 29 cents per kilowatt hour for residential customers, and 32 cents per kilowatt hour for mid-sized commercial customers, and 34 cents per kilowatt hour for large commercial customers. It is expected that the, that the, under a power purchase agreement, the PPA, that the school could save about $11,000 a month on power, and potentially millions of dollars in the long run. So St. Francis is not the only school undergoing this particular renewable program, but my understanding is that Harvest, Bishop, and others are also taking advantage of the sun and will be reaping from its savings. So we can safely say that a bulk of DOE's budget goes towards personnel, teachers and staff, and whatever left there are in their budget is for maintenance, supplies, books, equipments, and of course, utilities. And we heard that early this year as well, is the superintendent had basically said that there's an anticipation that there will be a need for an additional $5 million for utilities. And that's when, of course, the whole discussion and the introduction of this bill. So we don't have a lot of monies to be able to give for supplies and equipment, because yes, what's the first thing we do? We budget for teachers, staff first, and utilities. But now with these extra savings that could happen, then we can actually see it go into the classrooms, and you'll see why and how we're able to do this. So those monies then will go directly into the classroom. So what the bill proposes is to ensure that, and this is what GPA said, is to protect the fixed costs at the power company by only allowing no more than 80% of the monies that are on utilities for all of the schools to be powered by energy, and the remaining 20% then, which is, of course, the fixed cost that will remain with GPA. So with 80% of the schools being powered by solar, this not only means that cost savings for DOE and taxpayers, but the monies paid for this solar energy stays on Guam, and it would create jobs, and it would revolve, the money would circulate in the community. And, and that has been the biggest cost that GPA is saying. That doesn't matter to them, but that whatever monies that we collect, they collect from us, 80% of that goes off island. And what we would like to see is to ensure then that those monies stay now on island for, and also to help with the, the private purchase agreements that, that will be setting up with, with these companies. So on section two, which is section two A, is that DOE may enter an agreement with qualified providers, which will be at the best financial interest of the government of Guam for a period of up to and not exceeding 25 years. In, in this particular case, is that we're also saying that, that GPA will work closely with, with GPA, DOE, even, you know, other departments and agencies to, of course, set up the, the process for the procurement of this. DOE also will be able to amend the contract to allow solar energy in lease schools, because the five lease schools that we have, four of them is with one owner, and then one of them, JFK, is with the second owner. So therefore, this would also allow DOE to be able to negotiate that lease to make sure then that this is something that they would like to do with a, with the alternative energy. I had personally spoken to both of those two owners, and they definitely like the concept, so, but of course, we know that this is something that they're going to have to have a conversation with DOE to do this, rather than just them doing this by themselves. And as we know, JFK right now has the, one of the highest utility bills. On section B, where it says that, oh, that's the one I told you, where they're gonna be seeking then consultation from the Energy Office, Public Works, the Renewable Association. C is that DOE then, and the selected qualified purchase providers, rather, the PPA providers shall review historical power needs such as the past 12 months of power consumption of the selected schools, and provide the maximum size photovoltaic safely allowed by roof size, building orientation and location, and other physical conditions which may, which may affect the safe and effective size of the photovoltaic. Um, oh, wait, did I forget something here? Wait, I'm gonna have to go back to this page to make the amendment, so, but I'm just gonna explain everything first. On section D, subsection rather, D, is assured then, in this case, that the qualified providers shall pay for the design, financing, permitting, insurance installation, monitoring and maintenance of the system, and shall own and operate the system that's located on DOE's facility. And when I say the facility, we're talking about rooftops, nothing else other than that. They are owners of the system, the government doesn't have to pay for anything, any upfront cost, the only thing is, is the department continues to pay for the, the power that are being produced. On subsection E, that's straightforward, the qualified PPA providers must possess a valid Guam business license, and this was in conversation with GPA and some of the other renewable companies on island, and, and GPA wanted to make sure that these are individuals who are really valid business owners on the island, and also their concern was, and F is that the qualified PPA providers shall be experienced in designing, implementing, and installing solar energy systems, and have a record of established projects, has demonstrated this with the technical, operational, financial, managerial capabilities. So all those then would be actually considered when the RFP is going to be put out. G is, in, in this case, F-G. The billing cost here shall not exceed 80% of GPA's authorities' current billing charges to DOE, that's for G. H is that, of course, the qualified provider will work with the contractor responsible for the, the rooftops, where they have right now currently warranty of the school tops to ensure that the warranty is not voided, and the installation and operation of solar energy system. I, the qualified provider or the contractor responsible for the warranty, the school roof, roofs shall perform repairs of any portion of the roof damage during the installation of the solar system, and shall maintain those repairs for the duration of the warranty or the contract. And so, so these are things that we've learned in other contracts that the department has had, and we wanted to make sure that the warranty and, or the contract, that those would be maintained for the, the duration of the, the contract. J, this is simply a comprehensive report about the rates produced from the solar energy system. K, K really says that the qualified provider shall not extinguish its obligations under this agreement by assigning to another company, and, and without, of course, getting the approval. And the reason for this is that, and, and the example was just demonstrated here with GPA and the Quantum Solar, where they are the original contractors with GPA, and then they decided to sell it. But we wanted to make sure that when that happens, that we continue to make sure that there is this other approval, you know, by the department, and that they are, to make sure that whatever is within the requirements of their qualifications, that they, they adhere to that. L is that upon the expiration of the contract, the solar system shall be turned over to DOE in good working order and at no cost to DOE or to the government of Guam. M is the requirement for a monetary fine for not meeting the deadline of completion. Many times, you know, we have that example again at JFK, you know, to be able to build the school, then they kept putting the time back later and later and later, and there's absolutely no fines at all, monetary fines. no fines at all, monetary fines for these companies to pay for the delay, so that there will be that. And that particular fine, that anyway that comes in, rather than it just going into the general coffers, that it would actually be deposited into the Quinton Salapi Principat Fund, and this, and this exception only whenever there's a delay, of course, is only through force majeure, but basically, nothing else, that's all within their control. N is that the providers should be allowed to locate and/or co-locate the energy system on private or government property or another site for the purposes of achieving renewable energy power generation. What this basically saying is that, and I'll give you an example then, is that if we have a school that already in which they, we have the solar panels there, and later on, for whatever reason, because maybe the age of the school, the condition of the schools, and then the department and Education, the board, DPW, and whoever else will be involved to say, let's say that we want now to close this school down, what do we do with all the panels that are there? And what this would allow them is to then identify another site with, working with GPA that is also, GPA would also agree to it, because what's gonna happen then, the power generated now would not directly go to that one particular school that has been closed down or demolished, but to the GPA power grid, and the qualified provider will be credited for this to be used in other schools. So they must then be, the solar system must be in compliance with the current cap set forth by, by, by GPA, and even by law. And then you find that on page six, where it says then that, that GSA and DOE would agree that the school site is not a feasible site to install a solar energy system like JFK, and then Antolon. The qualified provider then would apply for a meter at their own expense to record the flow of the power into the existing grid. If co-located, that each individual system be metered for each specific qualified PPA providers, and, and so on. The one thing that definitely we were asked to do in our conversation, of course, when we were doing the markup, is to make sure, and six and seven, that the qualified PPA providers will provide interconnection study that validates the ability of a photovoltaic system prior to the construction if that photovoltaic system is expected to exceed 100 KW due to the co-location. And, and the reason for that, because then of an existing law that we, we have, it says here that, and that's in section three, which is still listed as law on two A and B, that the, shall not exceed 25 kilowatts for GPA residential class customers, shall not exceed 100 KW for GPA non-residential class customers. However, the new section there that's being amended to that particular title is C, where it says that this section is only applicable to solar energy systems that are located now on Guam, DOE-owned schools, lease schools, their administrative offices, ancillary buildings, and that GPA, public school customers under the third-party-owned solar energy or power systems may exceed net metering capacity limitation. So that's why the study was important to be done, because we're not trying to touch anything else to affect anybody else, but specifically just for DOE, because as we know, there are about 40 schools, so, and that's the purpose then of having to do that. Because if you take, let's say, maybe four schools, in which, of course, just taking their age and, and condition and all that, we know then there's supposed to be 100 KW for each school, but when you combine some of these schools, it would definitely exceed that, and that's why it's important that this, that they be allowed, that we're be allowed to then have that exceed the 100, but not until that study is done, and of course, working with GPA, and making sure, again, that it does not exceed, again, the 80%, where, because then we don't want it to go into the fixed cost of GPA. Did I forget something else here to say? Oh, so the savings then in this case is that, and that's in page six and O, is each participating school will have access to the energy savings yielded from PPA and GDOE for the respective schools, and that the savings then will be transferred from the utility pool after they made their payment. The savings itself then will be deposited into Quinton Salapi Principat Fund for each respective schools then. And that, of course, is in, in accordance or in concurrence with existing legislations that we have. And, and I know that Speaker Pangolinan has always put this in the budget as well, and if I, it's usually under the section of Utilities Reduction Initiative or Incentive, is that if each school principal of the departments encourage to practice energy conservation within the respective schools, and if they do, and they're able to reduce their, their utility cost, that then it'll be available to be spent to support school activities for students and staff. But in this case, since we have the creation of Quinton Salapi Principat, which is to be used, yes, for minor maintenance and repairs of the schools, I mean, conceivably, these could be large amounts of money that would be beneficial to a school. And I'm sorry, I know it took a bit longer, only because I just want to make sure that everybody understands every section of the bill, and, but I do have one amendment, I'm sorry, after all that, on, it should be on page three, line six, where it says may enter, oh, no, 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 let me see, where I'm switching over from GSA actually doing this, but rather the GPA does the procurement, because, you know, they have the, the techno-knowledge about power grids and metering and all that, and I think it'd be much better, to me at least, that it be done by GPA, where line, such qualified people shall be selected to a public bid conducted by Guam Power Authority in accordance, oh, it is there, I'm so sorry. I don't need to do the amendment. Thank you very much.
Speaker Wampert, I just want you to know that it wasn't the Vice Speaker's ruling, he said. It was your ruling on a timeline. Next up to speak on the motion, I'll go ahead and address Senator Frank Huggan. You're, you're recognized on the main motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand certainly in support of Bill number 74, and you know, initially when this initiative was being proffered and it was going around, and I know the Good Speaker conducted or applied due diligence in terms of getting members and representatives of the community and the private sector to participate in formulating this legislation, my initial concern is, how will this impact the Guam Power Authority? And I bring that up because it is a very legitimate issue. Right now, I, my understanding is that GPA is in the process of presenting to the chair or going through a public hearing, a measure that we will be entertaining to allow GPA to acquire an additional $35 to $39 million in the bond market. That's in addition to all its existing bond obligations. And I bring that up because obviously, Madam Speaker, I gotta dispense, I need to adjust this a little. I was gonna yield to the Good Speaker, but my neck was starting to experience, just a slight thing. But Madam Speaker, in, in this regard, obviously, taking away from GPA's base customers is gonna affect the finances of that entity, and entertaining the possibility of going out and borrowing an additional $35 million, what would that translate into? And it will translate into rate increases. But I understand that GPA, just very recently worked with the Good Speaker in formulating its opinion with regards to this legislation, saying and recognizing that, yes, there will be competition out there, yes, there will be possibilities of expanding the renewable energy options, because we know that GPA now is authorized to move in that direction, and they've consummated a couple of agreements where other companies will also be competitive through the Guam Power Authority. So after reviewing some of the provisions in Bill number 74, and acknowledging that GPA now has conceded to recognizing that they can work with the structure that is proposed within, within Bill 74, I feel a little bit more comfortable supporting it, because obviously, that would take into consideration the cost to our ratepayers. If there are any major concerns expressed by our people in the community, Madam Speaker, over the course of our everyday lives, meeting our people out there, it's a continual adjustment in rates, not only by Guam Power Authority and GWA. Because obviously, when the cost of living increases, then it takes away from their disposable or disposable income that they can apply to some of their other requirements. You know, so it's, Madam Speaker, it's certainly a very legitimate concern for our people on just being able to work with GPA with this measure, and acknowledge that it's gonna, it could conceivably result in significant savings to the Department of Education that can go and be applied to the Salapi Principat Fund, and go directly towards supporting our educational system and providing more resources to the principals, is certainly a movement in the right direction. I want to also acknowledge, Madam Speaker, that this whole issue about renewable energy has been taking place in our community over the course of the last two years. The good sponsor, Madam Speaker, of this legislation highlighted St. Francis School. That was one component. I believe not too long ago, if it wasn't two months ago, the Archbishop and the Archdiocese had already entered into agreements to similarly expand the solar energy program at St. Francis School to other Catholic schools within the Archdiocese. Also, also only very recently, St. Francis Parish, the church facility, will be transitioning into solar energy, renewable energy by the conclusion of this calendar year. So it's a movement, Madam Speaker, that we need to be able to take advantage of in terms of making sure that not only the ratepayers, but most especially the people of Guam, realize the benefits of taking advantage of a natural, I guess, gift from the good Lord of sun rays and whatnot, solar energy, and changing that and making sure that it can be utilized by our residents, by, in this case, the Department of Education, and by the entire island community. It's promoting what we have and what the good Lord has blessed us with in the sun, the wonderful sun that we receive, perhaps six, eight months out of the year that can be changed into energy. So Madam Speaker, I stand in support of this particular legislation. I do know that the Guam Power Authority will be taking, like the Speaker, the sponsor of this legislation that alluded to, will be responsible for the overall procurement process, and also there are mechanisms in here that require that the Department of Education, in consultation with their private power producer, in this case, for renewable energy, that they provide regular feedback and information to the Department of Education and also to this body, so that we can acknowledge and we can know and recognize exactly what the realizable savings and cost reduction is on behalf of our ratepayers and on behalf of the Department of Education in this case, and the entire community. So I welcome this legislation, and I think, I think it's only something that's gonna continue to be promoted and advocated for through the Guam Power Authority in terms of, hopefully, the end result is to eventually either sustain, either maintain, or reduce the rates for the ratepayers under the Guam Power Authority system. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Huggan. On the agenda to speak on the main motion, we do have Vice Speaker Cruz and then Senator Mike Sinek, oh, I'm sorry, Senator Tom Attah, you're recognized. I did see it here, thank you, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Fundamentally, I, I certainly am a proponent for renewable energy, and to the best, as, as best as we can, we should promote the use of renewable energy. However, in doing so, we want to make sure that we do not negatively impact other segments of the community in the process of trying to promote the use of renewable energy. So the concerns that I have are raised, and, and although I do have a number of concerns with the bill, I really would limit, I, I will limit my remarks to three points. Everything else is really kind of more mechanics. One is on, and I guess this will be on the amended or the substituted version of Bill 74-32 on page seven, and basically, this is, if you read down, if you read down on line 16 on page seven there, it reads, "Any contract issued under this item shall be under net metering as defined as a one-to-one exchange of energy for the life of the contract." And I think this is where that sort of arrangement will have a, an impact on GPA customers who are not using renewable energy. Let's take, for example, the Department of Education has an annual billing of about $15 million a year, and if we break down that annual billing of $15 million a year, approximately 10 million of that, or 70%, is for fuel costs. The remaining 5% is for fixed costs. Now, the fuel cost is something that, that varies. If, when the prices go up, that component, that variable component will also increase. But for now, the average annual billing for DOE is $15 million, 10 million for fuel, 5 million for fixed costs. If DOE goes to a renewable energy power production, then the avoided cost for the Guam Power Authority is that 10 million, because then it will not have to burn that much power to provide, to satisfy GPA's demand. So 10 million is the avoided cost. The $5 million, though, GPA is still having to pay for that. That $5 million represents DOE's contribution for the debt service on the generators that we entered into many years ago. It pays for the, the maintenance of the infrastructure that we have out there, which, for, in the case of Department of Education, even though they are on a renewable power source, they inevitably will want to stay connected to GPA, so that in the event that we have those dark rainy days, and they can't generate the power that they need, then they're gonna have to get fed by GPA. But GPA is gonna have to maintain that infrastructure. And so if we have then an arrangement where, where it's gonna be a one-to-one exchange of energy, then that means that Department of Education basically is saying they're not gonna pay that $5 million in fixed costs. And so we ask ourselves then, then who's gonna pay for that $5 million? That cost that, that, that was used to be contributed by Department of Education? That, of course, then, will be, will be, have to be reallocated to the remainder of us, and will inevitably result in a rate increase. And so, and so, you know, that's, that's where the unfairness, I believe, lies in this one-to-one exchange. I think GPA has always basically said, you know, we'll evaluate the power that is produced by that renewable energy source, and that you sell back to GPA, we'll evaluate that basically at the variable cost or the cost that can be avoided by basically at the variable cost or the cost that can be avoided by Guam Power Authority. And so we need to be careful then with how we do this. Now, so what is the appropriate valuation of this power that, let's say, DOE is going to, the excess power that DOE is going to sell back to Guam Power Authority? As we speak, the Guam Power Authority and the Guam Renewable Energy Association, they've already met once, they're going to be meeting again on December 3rd to sit down and start breaking down further this fixed cost component. But I think we have to recognize that, you know, the debt service on those generators at Cabras, somebody's still going to have to pay for it. And if because you are now in a renewable energy production, now you don't have to pay for it, then that means we're going to have to pick that up. You know, it's kind of like a group of five people who agreed to invest in a house and they all pay 20% each to the annual mortgage on it, and then two of them decide that, no, we don't want to, we don't want to be a part of this anymore, so now three people are left. So who's going to pay for those, the remaining debt service on that mortgage? It's going to be the three people that choose to remain in the house. And that annual burden then will increase for them. But on top of that, those two people that left the house, and in essence, you know, because Department of Education wants to remain tied in to the Guam Power Authority, those two people that left that investment, they're basically saying, oh, but we want to be able to go back to this house that we left, you know, in the event that something goes wrong with the other house or whatever it is that we're living at now. But it's just those three people that's paying for the cost of maintaining that house. So where's the fairness of that? The second part that I would ask the, so just to close that particular concern up...
Did you want the author of the legislation to...
No, I'm just registering my concern right now.
Okay.
And this is really a policy call that has to be made by this legislature. If the legislature wants to make the policy that DOE will then get off the grid and not have to contribute to the debt service, if it is the, if the policy is that we will then agree that those fixed costs will now be transferred to the rest of us and increase our rates so that we can satisfy that, then that's a policy call that this legislature will have to make. Or do we want to make it basically on a more equitable basis where whatever the avoided cost is to GPA, that should be the amount that we evaluate the power, the excess power that is produced and sold back to GPA? The second concern that I have is that in the, gosh, I, there's a provision in here and I forget which, where in here, but basically what it does is, a provision in here that says the size of the solar panels or the renewables that gets put on the school will be based on the average of the past 12 months. And if we use that, if we use that as that criteria for sizing how much that is put on, then we're going to find that in the next couple of years, they're going to be running short, because as equipment ages, it becomes less efficient, it gobbles up more energy, as the facilities age, it becomes less efficient, more air leakage, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so you got to put a provision in there for growth. And then the, in the bill, don't ask me where specifically it is. It's in the bill. It says that the contractor will not install renewable energy facilities greater than last year's, right? Well, why are we tying that investor's hand? You know, he's going to make his money during the summertime when DOE shuts down. He's got that whole day that he's producing power and he's selling to GPA. But now we're telling him, no, you can only do it based on whatever DOE was paying. So it doesn't quite, why now are we tying his hands behind his back? Maybe if we allow him to size it larger, so that then, you know, the excess energy produced during the school breaks and all that gets him that revenue, maybe that will then enable the contractor to reduce the price that he's offering to DOE. And so we need to think about that seriously. I just, you know, we just got the substitute bill just really minutes before we started and there's some significant changes which was not reflected, at least with the substitute bill, there was some, the new language was underlined. But I believe on the substitute bill on page three, that's in section two, it talks about GPA now is going to be the one that will be responsible for conducting the bidding process and the procurement. Now, that's new language. You know, as far as I, I don't know, maybe I should ask the speaker, did GPA actually agree to that?
I'm going to have her answer that. Speaker, can you, would you like to answer that? Oh, she said she would like to answer it all at the end.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
I imagine this is going to, I wouldn't be surprised if GPA would be surprised that now they're going to be responsible for the bidding process and all this stuff. Finally, I really would ask that we need to go back and take a look at the structure of how this bid is going to go out. And again, it is not, I was spending all my time reviewing on the introduced version of the bill, but at least on the introduced version of the bill, which is probably still somewhere in here in the substitute version. It was not clear if the bid was going to go out for, on a department-wide. So in other words, we're going to put out a bid for a contractor to install renewable energy facilities on all 41 campuses or 41 schools? Or are we going to put out 41 bids for a contractor to bid on each of the 41 schools? And I think there's going to be quite a difference in the cost then of that will be proffered. Obviously, if the contractor is going to have an opportunity to furnish the entire department, then there's that economies of scale that could possibly be enjoyed. But if it's on a onesies, twosies, then obviously you're not going to have that benefit. And so I think we really need to consider that. So I do have, you know, so I do have some serious concerns about the bill. I certainly would like to sit, if we can, send it back to committee and let's sit down and work with it to see how we can make it work. Then I would recommend that we do that. Otherwise, as introduced right now or as substituted, I really think it has some serious consequences to other segments of the community, which I don't think we intended to nor want. Thank you.
You're very welcome, Senator Ada. Next on the agenda, oh, I thought you meant at the end of closing. If you'd like to answer, Speaker Wampat, you're more than willing to answer his inquiries and his concerns as presented. You can do that right now.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I did take note of the three, of course, and he highlighted the three areas of the former speaker, and on page, so actually what it is, is on page, page seven, where he was talking on line 19, that any contract, I mean, at least that's where the senator was speaking on, that any contract issued under this item shall be net metering as defined as one-to-one exchange of energy for the life of the contract, and that GPA will not assess a power, and that he talked about that, that for the schools, that there'll be no, no, where am I? Will not assess a partial, the storage fee for excess power produced by DOE. And the concern here, at least from my notes, and I hope I got it right, is that when I said earlier, and it's on line 15, that it would not exceed the 80% of current GPA's billing. Now, and he used the example of 15 million for utilities and then 10 million of that will go towards the fuel, 5 million will go for fixed costs. And in my discussion with GPA, and they kept reiterating this, is to make sure, and the way they've calculated is this, unless I'm misinformed, is that the 20% that they're talking about for fixed costs, which is for their operations, for their debt service, for maintenance and all that, they do not want us to touch. The 80% of that which will exit the island, what we pay for fuel costs, and that goes off-island, they don't care about that amount actually being affected. And that's the reason why we made sure that throughout the bill, we always say that it should not then exceed that 80%, because we want to make sure that only that amount that goes off-island for fuel costs will be that that will be affected and never to touch GPA's fixed costs. So that's my response to that. On the second thing is the size...
Madam Speaker, if I may, I mean, since I had asked earlier when I was speaking for a yield, then I should at least then...
I will go ahead and address its section, my section or concern, my concern. So she answered one of the concerns, Senator Ada, I'll give you a time to respond to her answer.
And real quickly then, while I agree that on line 15 there talks about not exceeding 80%, keeping then, suggesting that the 20% is for the fixed cost, that really is contradictory with line 17, where it says that any contract issued shall be under net metering as defined on a one-to-one exchange of energy. So in other words then, when DOE produces an extra kilowatt of power that is excess to their needs, they're going to give that to GPA. And basically GPA will count that and will buy it at the same rate that they sell it. I imagine that's what that's saying there.
And if I may, Madam Speaker, because GPA actually went before the commission, and what they wanted to do was to actually take over this entire project that this bill's actually trying to do. And in the discussion with GPA, because they had a resolution already prepared and presented that not just the rooftops of DOE, but any additional land space that the department owns, because, you know, the department owns a lot of land in terms for sports facilities. And in that as well, what they wanted to do is that, two things they wanted to do. One is to make sure, first of all, that they would be the ones to do it and not anybody else, which of course is contrary to everything that this bill is trying to do. The second is, is that when they're saying that, yes, they wanted this one-to-one exchange, but what they wanted to do is to make sure that if there are, they want to sell it to the government for 29 cents, but they want to turn around and buy it for, I'm not sure what it is, 19 cents, I think it is. And that's the reason why we put one-to-one rather than, you know, them trying to buy it, rather buy it at a lower cost and then selling it at a higher cost back to DOE. And that at least is my understanding from the different conversations that we've had with them and what they've also had reported to POC.
Okay. Speaker Wampat, do you want to proceed with the, there are three, there are three inquiries?
The second, the size of their solar panels, and that actually then, I know the senator was trying to find it, and it is on page three, the bottom of page three, lines 23, starts at 22 down to 26. But the concern that the previous speaker had was, you know, the limitations on the size, rather, of their solar panels. But what this does is that it takes it from the very beginning, really, where it says that this provider here or providers shall review historical power needs such as, of course, it's just not limited to that, but it says such as, yes, you want to use past 12 months of power consumption to look at, to see exactly what the power needs have been of the school, to look at the, to provide maximum size, and then that would be allowed by the roof size, and that also you want to look at the building orientation, you want to look at the location again of that, and then you want to look at physical condition again of the school, because really the bottom line is, is you want to make sure that you, what you're going to, a system you're going to put up will be safe and effective for the school. And then, of course, then you continue on to page four, where it says, "In no case are the system besides to produce power in excess of the needs of specific buildings or campus as recorded during the previous 12 months." And then the previous speaker had the concern that, well, in the summertime when the kids aren't there and there's not going to be a lot of consumption of power, although we know is that really the air conditioning are kept on even during the summertime. We had this one incident where, if you recall, at Southern High School, so they tried to save money by turning off the air conditioning and as a result it ended up costing us more because then we started to have problems of mildew. And so now they keep them on running 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 100 and, how many days in a year? 365 days in a year. I'm thinking school days, but they're on 24/7. And, but what also would happen is that they are, like, for example, we, with the storm and there was no, very little sun out there. So what this would do then, at the annual, at the end of the year, when they balance this to look at more power being generated and less, of course, because of the fact that the, of the storm or rainy days and they were unable then to produce more and hence, of course, getting back into the system. The third is, is that, and that's on page three on line six, about whether it should be 40, 41 individual schools or one big one. And then on line six, the Department of Education may enter into, yes, one or more power agreements. But you see, this is not for us to say. This will be the department, the department would determine exactly how do they want to do this, because I've had some conversations with them, and they're saying there's a possibility of doing it even by districts if, you know, they want to. Again, don't forget, we've got the four schools with one company and the one with one company, and then that leaves the remaining schools. So it's not us basically telling the Department of Education then whether they should go one only or should they go with multiple contracts.
Thank you, Speaker, for answering the inquiries to Senator Ada. Senator Tom Ada, you still have the floor in this, you want to give up your time.
I think I've already stated my position on this. Thank you.
Sejuos Masi, Senator Ada. Now to speak would be Vice Speaker Cruz and then we would have Senator Mike Snickless. Vice Speaker Cruz, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this bill was heard in my committee, and I was very proud to actually hear this bill in my committee. Because contrary to the statement of an earlier speaker, renewable energy has not been something that this community has been... that this community has been discussing for the last two years. I hate to admit it, but I was an advocate for renewable energy and alternate energy before four members of this legislature were born. Governor Batalio and I were advocates of renewable energy at the end of his first term in seventy-eight, and in seventy-nine and eighty, we traveled throughout South America and Europe, pursuing alternative energy for Guam, and renewable energy. So when I was just at the cemetery an hour ago, I coincidentally was standing in front of his crypt, and I had to knock on it and apologized to him that in this report, I actually reported it out only because I had some major concerns about it. And my concerns about it are partially the fault of GPA, and I want to record this, I mean, report, state this to the record. I had this hearing on May the thirteenth, and as most of you know, I don't sit on bills. Reported out but for the fact that I had been waiting, waiting for GPA to speak up and answer some questions. Because at the hearing, a young man who admitted that I was, that he was my son, had a real interesting statement, and he was one of the proponents, he has a business out there. And on page six of the, eight of committee report, he very clearly stated, "GPA should be involved regarding the system and their installation, because the size of a solar system may affect their switchboard and cause fluctuation that may result in blackouts and brownouts." That was Mr. Lewis Ting. I want to give him credit for being honest about the fact that though he had, he was, had business concerns, that he was willing to say that there are some concerns, blackouts and brownouts. And Mr. Beneventi, on eleven and twelve, makes mention of it, and he says that the project requires mitigating stability issues with the intermittency of wind and how it will affect balancing of load and quality of power to all customers. And then on page twelve, he states that the lower required for GW or DOE to solar power panels may affect the rest of GPA's customers, therefore, a study may be needed to determine how increasing a hundred KW may affect residents and DOE. I had been waiting for GPA to provide that study. And I finally just decided, because the author had been pushing for it to get it out, I released it. And she has substituted some of it. I'm not sure if it has been shown to GPA or to DOE, but I have real grave concerns of not, I'm not going to go into the financial part. My concern is just the issue of blackouts and brownouts, because of the fact that if you have, like we've had in this last month, all of this overcast, what's going to happen when, for a while, there, like it has been over these last few days, it pours like the dickens for an hour, it's sunny and hot for three, and the system goes up and down? There really has to be some way to be able to mitigate that, and I blame, and I use the word blame, GPA for not submitting a report. I've sat on this bill, waiting for it. And if this bill passes, they're going to have to deal with it. But I have major concerns about it, because I'm concerned about the fluctuation, and because it says that on page seven of the bill, in the substituted version, that GPA will not assess the power storage fee for excess power produced by the GDOE schools, and will remain responsible for providing on-demand power and at no additional charge to GDOE. As I understand it, GPA was saying they would be willing to provide power to GDOE, but GDOE would have to sign an agreement with GPA that would account for the fluctuation and on and off, that if they're going to have to pay for all the standard costs to keep it, keep the system, especially like up in Mingala. If they put solar panels on the roof of GCC, GW, and UOG, the amount that that could produce up there could possibly power the whole area for a couple of hours, and then with a rainstorm, everything falls, and somehow GPA's supposed to, all of a sudden, just shoot power back in there. I have real concerns about this, and I unfortunately don't know whether or not this bill has, I mean, the substituted by the author, has been seen by GPA. And the fact that GPA is delinquent in their not providing this committee, my committee, and this legislature with a study on how it's going to affect and what the impact is of this. And so they're going to have to deal with that on their own, but that was a fault of their own, because we waited five months for it.
Senator Mosse, Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Mike Siniklas, on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, with respect to this bill, I see things very differently than from some of the retiring speakers. What I see here is a way for us to not only save on the power bill to DOE, which is a power bill that we all pay, the taxpayers, it's not DOE's power bill, it's the taxpayer's power bill. Not only do I see us saving on that, but I see us, through a roundabout way, building additional capacity into our power grid. And the building of additional capacity is something that we need to take very seriously, Madam Speaker, because we talk about growing the economy, we talk about building more hotels, we talk about the military buildup and the additional demands on infrastructure that that's going to create. All of that is going to require additional capacity, power generating capacity from our power authority. And what this bill does is, not only does it save DOE on their power bill, but it also creates a new form of power capacity, so that what DOE was using from the grid, that GPA was producing directly, now could be instead picked up by a new hotel, or picked up by an increase in the military facilities and the power needs that they have. So I agree with the retiring speaker in his concern about the need for us to identify how these fluctuations are going to be impacting the overall system. But for me, when I step back at it, from it, and I look at it from a big picture's perspective, I see the building of capacity separate and apart from the actual capacity build of the Guam Power Authority. And not only does it increase the capacity of power generation for the overall island, but it does so in a way that's energy efficient, it's clean energy. And the more we can transition our existing assets into clean energy, and the more growth we have, the more balance we're going to be able to achieve in terms of our ability to generate capacity to meet the economic demands and the growth of our island, and transitioning the expense side of the balance sheet, particularly in our government, from having to pay a power bill to being able to generate our own electricity. I think that this is overall something that is going to be a very, very good thing for our island, and I can understand the initial apprehension and the concern from GPA. But what we need to do is, we need to start looking forward a little bit more. We start looking forward a little bit more in terms of what capacity, future capacity GPA projects is going to need, because this bill will create an alternative energy resource, perhaps for the next twenty-five years. What's our additional capacity going to be for the next twenty-five years? I'm sure it's going to go up. And instead of GPA having to go out to the bond market and borrow more money to build another generator, or enhance what we have, or what have you, that capacity is going to be picked up by these solar systems. And I think the more we can transition to that, the better off Guam will be. So I think this is a great bill. I must admit, I'm not entirely sure exactly how it's going to turn out. This is one of those very substantive pieces of legislation where the outcome is very difficult to predict exactly, but overall, I see that it's going to increase capacity and save money on our power bill to our education system, and that's something that I can get behind. I do have a couple of amendments that I would like to propose to the bill. The first is on page four, line two, and this is in reference to a retiring speaker's concern about the previous twelve months, and how that the previous twelve months is being used as a gauge for the limitation of the system that can be put on the school. I too was concerned about that. But my concern has to do with the fact that the prior twelve months could be affected by unforeseen circumstances. It's possible that by the time this bill gets passed, we may have a typhoon, or, you know, I pray that it doesn't happen, but it is possible, we may have some natural disaster that may artificially reduce the power consumption for the twelve-month period. And so I would like to propose an amendment to page four, line two, after the word months, strike the period, insert a comma, and it reads, "Exclusive of extraordinary circumstances, such as natural disasters, that may reflect reduced power utilization during the period."
On that amendment, anybody wish to be heard?
Page four, line two, after the word months, after twelve months, it will read, "Exclusive of extraordinary circumstances, such as natural disasters, that may reflect reduced power utilization during the period." I apologize, Mr. Speaker, I can't make copies and have them circulate.
Anyone wish to speak on that? Any objection? Hearing no objection. Amendment is adopted. Your next amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have a similar amendment on page four, line twenty. This one reads a little differently, but it also references the annual consumption. And I do want it to have the same kind of catchphrase, but it will be worded slightly differently after the word campus, to have it read, "Exclusive of extraordinary circumstances, such as natural disasters, that may result in power generation greater than the consumption for the period."
On that amendment, any senator wish to be heard? Any objection by any senator?
Page four, line twenty.
Senator Hatta, you're recognized.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, on that particular line, I actually, I'm wondering, why are we limiting the provider from producing power in excess? So if the school is only needing a hundred KW, and if that system can produce, in fact, I don't know that you can crank back how much it produces, but it's to the, I think, to the benefit of the school, to the benefit of the contractor, to be able to produce to the maximum capacity that he can, so that he can sell as much as he can to GPA, because GPA, I'm sure, could use it. But it's really pocket, money in the pockets of DOE and the contractor, who could then pass on that benefit to the school. So quite frankly, I think it would really, in fact, if we were to strike out from line eighteen, at no time, strike that out all the way through line twenty, that would be a lot less restrictive, I believe, and more beneficial.
Thank you, Senator Hatta. Is, I'm not going to take that as an objection to your amendment. Is there a stated objection to the amendment being proffered? Hearing none, or seeing none?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I do have another amendment I would like to proffer on page five, to add a new section L. And let me, before I state my amendment, please allow me to preface it. We have a lot of old buildings in our school system. Some of them are in need of renovation, some of them are in need of demolition and complete rebuild. And what was concerning me when I, when we initially had this hearing was, if we do buy this solar system that's supposed to last twenty-five years, has a useful life of twenty-five years, and we stick it on the roof of a school that should be torn down yesterday, or has a useful life of anything less than twenty-five years, then we run the risk of taking an asset that has a twenty-five-year useful life and sticking it on an asset that has a useful life lower than that. And so I want to proffer an amendment that would require the qualified provider to move the solar unit at any time, at the request of the superintendent, if the school that it's installed upon is going to be undergoing renovation or demolition that may affect the usefulness of the solar system. So if we put on Simon Sanchez a solar system that's supposed to last twenty-five years, and we end up bringing in more money into TEFF and increasing our bond ceiling and being able to borrow to build a new school up there, I want us to be able to, I want the provider to remove that solar system from the old Simon Sanchez, and either move it to a different school, or stick it onto the new Simon Sanchez. So my amendment, it's kind of long, and I'll make sure after I read it into the record that we have copy circulated, and if we need to recess, I'll be fine with that. But it's to add a new section L. that reads, "Throughout the qualified provider's management duration of any solar energy system procured and installed under this act, the qualified provider shall, at no cost in excess of the management agreement, remove and reinstall any such solar energy system at the request of the Superintendent of Education, if the facility that such system is installed upon undergoes renovation or demolition that may affect the usefulness of the solar energy system." And I can have copy circulated, Mr. Speaker.
Madam Speaker, do you wish to be heard?
Yes, and thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. And actually, the amendment that was just proffered is addressed here, on page five on N., which basically would allow then, the qualified provider, to locate or relocate that system for those conditions, because if you read, again, on to the page, the next page and page six, when it talks about the following conditions must be made, so that if they agree that the school site is just not feasible to install that place, I mean, the system in, and then also, there's another here section that, remember, prior to the time in which this system can be placed on a school roof, is that they must take all those things into consideration, the building, the location, the physical condition, the safety of it, so that one is that they would not put it on the system for that if they find out, but if it's there already, and what they need to do then, and they're going to be allowed to locate it or co-locate, that means to, yes, to remove it and put it elsewhere, whether it's private land, government land, or another site, to then achieve the same thing of regaining renewable power energy to satisfy the consumption for that particular site. So what he's in essence saying does not harm it in any way, I guess maybe the language is a lot different. So I don't have an objection to it, because that was, in our discussion, my concern as well, is that when we took, for example, let's say, Antlawn Middle School, had this been there, and then they decide to close school, move them, then what do we do? And that was the question that was brought up, and that's why the language to allow them to co-locate, that's the term that they use, and, but I have no objection.
Any other senator wish to be heard? On the amendment for right now. Did you wish to be heard on the bill? Any other senator? On the amendment?
Yes.
Senator Limataro, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I just want to raise concerns as to, you know, in respect to these private power producers and their ability to go into a bid for a system, if we don't tell them upfront that they're going to be required to remove these systems and place them somewhere else, how are they going to price these units? Obviously, this is a significant cost to actually mount it, and then go up there and say, "By the way, you need to move it now." You know, the copper wires... You know, the copper wires all cut to a certain length, they might have to, I just don't see how a private entity would be able to budget for the removal and relocation of a solar panel system, especially if it's going to consume what is going to be a large surface area in the, you know, in the school system. So I'm concerned with the amendment in the sense that if we put it out to bid, and I'm bidding on something, and then I'm told 10 years from now, "By the way, we're going to renovate this building that we didn't tell you in your bid prior to that," they're not going to know how to bid it. And if they're going to assume that at one point in time, they could possibly have to remove it, they're just going to jack up the costs, because they don't know what it's going to take, or when it's, what point they're going to have their return on investment, only to be told that they have to remove it. So I'm not sure that that, this amendment is going to achieve what I think the current speaker is trying to achieve. I understand what he's saying, and it makes sense, but to require the private entity to somehow either bid it upfront and put it in the price that I may, I have to hedge my risks and plan for what it's going to cost me to remove this system, it could be cost prohibitive. It could be to the point where we're not really saving any money at all. And so I object to the amendment, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
There's been an objection to this Nicholas amendment? Everyone, there's been an amendment, an objection to the amendment. On the amendment, did you wish to be heard, Speaker Pangolino?
Yes.
All right. And then Senator Winia Barnes, on the amendment.
Thank you very much. I certainly understand, you know, desire to be as certain and as precise as we can be, but I think putting this into legislation will ensure that every single bid then that goes out, the contractor will be put on notice that, hey, you know, in a school that's 10 years old, you need to plan and price for relocating this should this occur. So I understand the fact that we need to price it out, and we need to provide notice, and contractors and the PPAs need to plan for it, but I think that's what we're trying to do here. We're trying to make sure that when the, not only do they plan for it, but when we release the bids, that it's in there, and it's disclosed, that this may be an additional cost that's required of you if, for example, you know, we decide to do this. And I think it's pretty easy to then put that into a, you know, we don't need to put this in at JFK, because that's a brand-new school, but we certainly need to put it in at Simon Sanchez if we're going to install it at Simon Sanchez. So I think this sets the stage to ensure that we don't blindside anybody. So in that respect, I think it works, you know, with regards to requiring that this be part of the installation and so forth. That's really kind of my read on this and my perspective on this, that it provides for that disclosure and planning on the part of GPA, or if that bill should pass and GPA puts out these bids, or the private power producer, when he bids on it, that he knows what the law requires and that it's disclosed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Senator Winia Barnes.
Ms. Speaker, just based on sharing the same sentiments with the retiring speaker, it would be noted that also, based on the concerns that have come up even during the markup hearing, that the PPA would have done their due diligence in reference to the building, that they would be putting the equipment on, and that was the reason why the location and co-location was included into the breakdown, in case if a generation, if the power generation could not be absorbed on one area, that the co-location place could absorb that power grid, and that's why that was, then that was, that is why that that was instituted. But I just, I just want to share that, as I understand the concern of the senator objecting to this amendment, I do know that it was discussed in the markup hearing, or the markup meeting with some of the senators.
It would seem that, except for the five schools built in the last six years, 36 schools do not have a life expectancy of 25 years, so all of those would have to include a provision. And what would the impact be on the price?
Well, that's why the inner bit study was instituted. That's why it's in.
Did, yes, there was an objection. I'm trying to figure out whether or not there's a discussion that may resolve the objection? No? We'll take a short recess and let, all right. All right, fine, there's no resolution to it. On the motion, I'm going to have to take a vote, because there has been an objection. All those, did you wish to speak?
I would like to close on the amendment.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I understand where the retiring speaker who proffered the objection is coming from. The bottom line, Mr. Speaker, is that the cost to move those units are going to have to come from somewhere. It's either going to have to get priced into the management agreement, or the government of Guam is going to have to pay for moving those units if they're going to be situated on a facility that it's no longer going to be viable on. And that's what scares me the most, Mr. Speaker. I'm scared we're going to buy this power system, we're going to put it there, and we're not going to be able to afford moving it if we have to. And then we're going to be in breach of contract, because something happened at the school that caused the building to be renovated, that caused the system to get damaged, and then all of a sudden, everything goes into a, another procurement nightmare. So I would prefer, Mr. Speaker, that we are very, very clear about it in the law, that if the building is going to be renovated or demolished in any way that's going to affect the usefulness of that solar system, we're going to be able to move it. And if that's going to require price adjustments, risk-based pricing by the vendor, then that's something that we're going to have to face head-on. And I would much rather we face that head-on and price that into the agreement than to try and discount that risk-based pricing by not including it, only to come to find out that we do need to move a unit, and we don't have the money to do it. And then failure to move the unit results in breaches of contract and a whole dozen other things. So I believe that this amendment is going to make sure that it protects the investment that we're looking to make here. I stated earlier, most of our schools do not have a useful life of 25 years or more. And if we were to try and make that be the standard for installing any systems, we won't be installing any at all. And so installing systems that would be movable in the event that there needs to be renovation or demolition, I think would be very prudent. And another reason why it's so important, Mr. Speaker, is that while the language in the bill, the preceding language, may require that that be assessed prior to installation, the reality is that there may be circumstances that affect a school structure that were not foreseen. For example, there could have been a storm that completely blows through the school and forces it to get shut down, or forces it to get condemned. There may be an earthquake that forces it to get condemned. Those are things that we just cannot know. And if that were to happen, what happens to the investment that we made of these solar systems, and how are we going to continue to benefit from that investment? So I think it's important for us to make sure that if we're going to have it installed into something permanent, that we're going to be able to move it as necessary if a situation arises, because the last thing we want to do is make these kind of high-dollar investments and watch them deteriorate, or go unattended to, or fall through the cracks, because we did not properly address the potential need to have to move them in the event that the facility was no longer adequate. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Did you wish to speak on the amendment? All right, he's closed. All those in favor of this Nicholas amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. Motion passes. Anything further, Senator?
I did have, thank you, Mr. Speaker, I did have one final amendment, but I kind of wanted to yield to the author, if she would be so gracious. On page eight, line two, it states that the qualified PPA provider must be doing business in Guam for at least one year. That kind of concerns me, Mr. Speaker, because we all hear about the statistics, a lot of businesses fail within their first year or so of operations. I'm afraid that we might have a, an operation that opened up for a year, that's going to get this huge contract, that's not going to be able to actually deliver on it over the full useful life of the asset. And so I was, I guess I would proffer this first as a question to the author, is there a reason why we are narrowing it, or I'm sorry, broadening it out to include everybody that's at least a year old? Because I would be interested in proffering an amendment to increase that, pending the answer from the author.
Madam Speaker, do you yield?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. And that was one of the discussions we had as well, when we were, when we met with GPA in wanting to make sure that these are credible companies, and that is the reason why, when you look at number two, is that these companies are not going to be a fly-by-night companies, that they really must have, you know, experience in designing, implementing, installing, and have a record of established projects, demonstrate technical, operational, financial, managerial capabilities to design and operate it. And based on that real stringent number-two qualification, then, any company, then, we're saying is that, do we want them to stop a company with that kind of a background and experience, should they then locate here and operate, at least show, first of all, is that they have a license, then, so I said, well, I think we need to at least put that they have been at least here and operating for one year. So that was, of course, then, some of the discussions we've had. Thank you.
Is that satisfactory, Senator?
I appreciate the response from the author. I still have a concern with it, Mr. Speaker, for a variety of reasons. One is, not only am I concerned about the performance capacity of the operation if it's only been existing for one year, but even if we have operations that come from other jurisdictions into Guam and bring their goods with them, the reality is that our environment is very unique, and if they're bringing in a product that isn't properly vetted environmentally, it's possible that we may be installing systems that are going to be very, very, you know, ineffective, they may rust much faster than we would like them to. I remember, without mentioning the retailer, a hardware store, they would bring in these railings for sidewalks or for fences, and my dad, he bought one of them to use as a divider for one of his duplexes, and not even 12 months later, Mr. Speaker, that whole thing was rusting out. And it was, you know, it wasn't very expensive, but it obviously was not suited to the environment. And so I think that if we're talking about providers who are doing this business, the solar energy business, and they've been doing it here for three years, and they have all of the other successive criteria as stated by the retiring speaker, I think that we'll be looking at somebody who not only has a proven track record, but who also has a proven product. Because you won't be able to stay in business for three years in this particular line of work if your stuff was rusting out after the first year. So I would like to proffer an amendment on page eight, line two, to change one year to three years.
On the amendment, any senator wish to be heard? Senator Ada? Any other senator after Senator Ada?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I certainly, you know, would be an advocate for local preference. I'm just wondering, you know, why are we reinventing the wheel? Why are we using new criteria when the Guam procurement law really actually already sets out a criteria for local preference? For example, in section 5008 of the Guam procurement law, it talks about, "All procurement of supplies and services shall be made from among businesses licensed to do business on Guam, and that maintains an office or other facility on Guam. Whenever a business that is willing to be a contractor is, A, a licensed bona fide manufacturing business, that adds at least 25% of the value of an item, not to include administrative overhead, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It is a business that regularly carries an inventory for regular immediate sale of at least 50% of the items of supplies to be procured, or is a business that has a bona fide retail or wholesale business location that regularly carries an inventory on Guam of a value of at least one-half of the value of the bid, or $150,000, whichever is less, is a service business, actually in business, doing a substantial portion of its business on Guam, and hiring at least 95% US citizens." So, you know, we have these criterias as to really what are reasonable criteria that should be used for local preference procurement. So, you know, just to put that you must be here for one year, so maybe we may want to consider actually then the criteria that is already in the Guam procurement law regarding local preference. Thank you.
Speaker Wampat, on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. If I can take you to page seven, which of course underscores what the following, of course, is that, what this would do is that it would be subject, yes, to Title V, Chapter 500, that GCA grant a preference to a local business. And then, of course, I know I need to reword this, that instead of the way it's written, but the contract for this service shall be granted to a local business who meets the following requirements in essence, and that is, one, to have a license here and be here in Guam for one year, two, that, of course, all this performance capacity, and then, three, these local businesses will be given that 5% advantage point of the lowest bidder who, under $500,000, and 3% to the lowest bidder for contracts of $5,000 or more. I mean, so that's just to try to make sure that we help our local businesses on island, our small businesses as well, because these are companies that will stay and invest. So I'd like to keep it, of course, at exactly what it is, and I know, however, that it's the will of the body, but, you know, it takes us, this is just for local contractors, but then when you go to page four, and then you look at line seven, of course, it says now, in the whole, you know, who these qualified bidders are, it says that must possess a valid Guam business license, and this, of course, later on, I'm going to have to amend. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
So is that an objection? Madam Speaker? Are you registering an objection to the amendment to three years? All right, so there is an objection to the amendment to three years as opposed to the one. Any other senator wish to be heard on the amendment? Senator Pangolinan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, here's a place in a policy, I guess, that I always struggle with, you know. I certainly support local businesses, I support opportunities for our people, and they're reflective in the votes that we've taken on some of the current statutes in the books. But then when we're kind of moving towards cutting-edge stuff, you know, are we providing then the best opportunity for the expansion of opportunities for our own local people? And, you know, why would, for example, we get somebody who opens a franchise for a, you know, for SolarCity, for example, the largest installer of solar energy panels in the country, started by Elon Musk, of course, from PayPal, and they are just going like gangbusters. So they have technology, because they install so many systems, they have processes and inventory, that is cutting-edge. And some of it is now so routine that it's not cutting-edge anymore, but they still have the efficiency. So if I wanted to go and buy a franchise for SolarCity to open up here, I got to be in business one year before I can bid on any government business? Does that make sense? Maybe it does, but are we now limiting the opportunity then for our local people who provide investments in things like this by excluding them from doing business until they've been in business for a year? So... So, you know, I kind of struggle with that. It's good policy, it's a good idea, but are we open market or are we not open market? Are we business-friendly or not business-friendly? And so it really is hard at times to kind of provide the framework for when do we move one way and when do we move the other way? And this is one of those situations. I think because of what this industry is and where it's going and where it still can go, given the development of new silica-based panels, installation differences, new inverters, new whatever, that would translate into greater capture of this energy and greater efficiencies. And so that's my struggle in this. And so I certainly appreciate what we're trying to do and have gone one way and the other way on things and seem to be contradictory. And this may be another one of those times where I kind of just go with my best feeling and gut with regards to the climate of the business investments that we want to present to outsiders, as well as supporting our own local people as they risk their money and their livelihood, their life savings, to provide opportunity for then our local people whether they would hire. So I just don't know where to go. Thank you.
And I want to remind the senators that the amendment is to change it from one year to three. Anybody else wish to be heard on the amendment before I invite the sponsor to close? Senator Nicholas, you may close.
You know, Mr. Speaker, in light of the wisdom shared by my colleagues and the way the bill is written, it does provide a very strict maintenance environment for the service provider. And so, you know, one of my concerns is the, is the useful life of the asset and whether or not it would be a good fit for Guam, given the fact that our climate is so unique. But I guess that's something that's going to have to be borne by the, by the service provider. If they bring in something that's rusting out, I guess they'll have to make sure they change it out in a timely fashion. I would like us to be a little bit more strict, I guess you could say, when it comes to these potentially multimillion-dollar investments. But I do agree with the retiring speaker, you know, there is that, that struggle, you know? The balance of opening up the market and encouraging the competition versus setting the standards that we have and making sure that those standards are going to be met to, to meet the intent of what it is that we're trying to do. But the author of the bill did a very good job of writing in language that does require specific performance standards of the system, and it does require specific maintenance standards of the system. So, given that this is one of those bills that's going, that we're definitely going to have to just pretty much see how well it turns out, I'm going to go ahead and withdraw my amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. The amendment has been withdrawn. The next senator who wished to be heard is Senator Tina Muniya Barnes, followed by Senator Pangolinan. Anybody else wish to be heard after these two? Thank you.
I promise, Mr. Speaker, I'll be brief in the inches of time. I just want to share that I stand in full support of Bill Number 74-32 LS, and I'd like to thank the author for giving me the opportunity to be a part of her call sponsorship. More importantly, when this bill was introduced, I want to say, early on in the first quarter of, or the first part of this year, there was a lot of conversation that was going on with both GPA. And it's good news to know that, based on a lot of this renewable energy coming to the forefront today, there has been a renewable energy organization that has, a nonprofit organization that just has been implemented and has been watching a lot of the legislations as it relates to renewable energy, other bills that they've been watching it closely. And they too were a part of sharing what their concerns are or what other amendments could be included in the substituted bill to make this bill, I guess, accommodating for them. So I just want to share that I support the efforts and I thank the speaker for doing this. I always say that when you see successes happening in places, especially in our community, that can have a positive influence moving forward, why reinvent the wheel when you can take that concept and template it for government facilities or government programs or government projects and tweak it to, to make it work for, for the government? So this is one, legislations that had a couple of meetings after the public hearing and that I thank the good speaker for being open-minded in making sure that we listen to all the concerns that came in from the community, even after the public hearing. And I want to thank you for at least looking at this bill and reporting it out and sharing your statements. So, Senator Massey.
Thank you very much. Speaker Pangolinan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I want to say that I rise into support of this legislation. As a matter of fact, I really feel it doesn't go far enough. It doesn't open up the field. You know, the issue of renewable energy and what it's supposed to provide us is an opportunity for the future, to kind of know where we're going with regards to energy costs in our community. And we have seen tremendous advances in renewable energy and the cost of that renewable energy for the production of the panels, wind turbines, are two of the most installed alternative energy systems that we have today. And, you know, I keep looking at GPA and their objections, and while I sympathize and empathize with them, I just, I can't seem to accept some of the explanations they have for objecting to what we're trying to do here and even any additional expansion into renewable energy that provides opportunity for the residential consumer as well as the small business consumer. I mean, GPA's saying, my God, I can't, I can't open up the grid system and accept renewable energy installations, you know, for 100 kilowatt or a 250 kilowatt. But you know what? I'm going to go out there and obligate the taxpayers of Guam through $250 million so that I can get some big corporation to put up a solar farm that has the same technical problems that you have with regards to the installation of these smaller units. We still have to account for what happens when that $250 million investment doesn't produce the power? I mean, do I still have to pay them? Is that why we don't have a problem with it? Because I still have to pay the $250 million that we obligated ourselves and all the consumers of Guam without a choice to paying back this huge investor who has been able to flip that contract, you know, at least once, meaning we're overpaying at $250 million? It means that the people who put that project together sold GPA a $250 million contract. But you know what? They were able to sell it to the largest, one of the largest operators of alternative energy for less than $250 million, or whatever their profit is, which means that we overpaid. Instead of GPA saying, you know what? We bid it out at 250. We thought that was the best price we had. Now these guys went out and they sold it for 200 million. We should go and rebid it. We should rebid that contract because this company doesn't want to perform on the 250 million, and they may have sold it for whatever, whatever they sold it at. But they made a profit. People who packaged that thing and flipped it have already made a profit before producing a single kilowatt of power. And we're all going to, supposed to sit back and say, great job, GPA. Great job. Never mind all these. But here's a guy struggling who wants to put in and save DOE money or save himself some money, and we're saying, we're going to put you through engineering analysis on the stability of the grid that will occur should you have cloud pass overhead and you're not able to produce 100 kilowatt at 30 cycles versus 60 cycles, and therefore, we're going to have to charge you for that. My God! What are we trying to do to the small consumer on this community that's struggling with this thing and trying to provide a policy? They should be working with us instead of against us. But they're willing to work and put in millions of dollars and hundreds of thousands of dollars in their own analysis to say that that $250 million is viable and we're going to go and obligate all of you for the next 25 years. Why can't we get that same kind of commitment to help, you know, to help Louis Sting, to help Bill Hagan, who is hiring employees every single day, paying them right now, installing it, helping our community deal with, and consumers deal with the ever-rising cost of power? We're putting roadblocks instead of clearing the road. That's not what we need. We need to clear the road for these people. But instead, what we're seeing is, we're figuring out how to build roadblocks. These guys aren't hurdlers, they're businessmen. We shouldn't require them to learn how to run a business and jump hurdles at the same time. We need to help them. You know, we need to build steps in front of those hurdles so that they can overcome those hurdles. And we're not doing that. We're not seeing it, as you say. You've waited for how long with GPA? You know, we're not just saying this, you're saying it because you've waited for them. You've discussed it, you had the hearing and so forth, but we didn't see it. We didn't see that kind of commitment, you know? Every day, every day, a cloud passes or, you know, we used to have these load shedding blues, right? Where GPA just shuts off the power or it trips. Now we don't have load shedding blues. We have scheduled power outages. You don't think that's a burden on the grid and the system and these scheduled power outages? Somehow just aren't always scheduled. Sometimes they just happen. But we've kind of gotten used to that because we've been sold on this idea that, oh, no more load shedding blues. You're right. But we have power outages that impact the grid and that draw on the power on the grid every single day, fluctuations in the grid every single day, that would compare to nothing should these small system installations be put in place and planned for, and planned for. And these people are planning for them, you know? They're putting in the redundant systems necessary to ensure that the backfeed doesn't occur, feed into the grid system for some unfortunate landman who's working down the road there and shock him because it's in there. We have these things. They are engineered, you know? We got some emails from engineers in our community that says, hey, don't let them kid you that we don't have, you know, renewable energy technicians and so forth. I trained five of them on Guam in the last two years and three in the CMI. A local engineer who's done that. So he's saying, let's, let's, let's help, let's move forward, you know? And this is a policy specific for DOE. We need a greater policy. We have that policy, you know, and we've worked with it and changed it. I mean, how many years did it take GPA to implement, you know, net metering? As long as I've been here because I was the one who introduced the original bill. But it just took so long. And finally, when we have kind of that technology and the economics and the desire and the adventurism of our local people and local entrepreneurs and local businesses to venture into this, finally, when we have all these things in our favor, you know, that creates opportunity and progress in a community, we're trying to shut them down or slow them down so much so that that 250 million can come online and then we're saying, no more, no more alternative energy because we can't handle the load and we can't handle the fluctuation because we've got a 40-megawatt facility up there. So now, all the small businesses have to buy their power from that guy so that we can pay the contract that GPA entered into there that's overpriced right now. I know that because they flipped the contract and they made a profit already. That's what I see occurring here. And they're going to do it. And, man, the PUC, I don't know. They just haven't been too much of an ally, you know? I've fought just about every battle I have, you know, in terms of policy and this. I think I've lost every single one that I've gone before the PUC for, before, except for the $20 million on GWA. And they're telling me that's going to result in an 18% rate increase. The one thing I want is saying, you won, but you're going to, I was going to use the other word, but I didn't think that I should, you know? You won, but, yeah, it really is frustrating. I mean, I'm frustrated as a policymaker. Can you imagine how frustrated this burgeoning group of people who are adventurous, who are not risk adverse, who are putting their, their money on the line and saying, I can feel it, I know it, I'm doing it in other areas where there's less stringent regulations. But when it comes to the government and the government trying to give me a, you know, a boost up, it's just not happening and it's not doing it. So it's up to us to make that decision, you know? And the concerns voiced are technological and engineering concerns that solutions exist and have been implemented in other areas and continue to be challenged. But, you know, that's what engineers are for, you know? They can do it. We have great talent. We have great talent at GPA itself. You know, it's kind of like talking to, to the people who actually do the work, you know? Who are just as adventurous in saying, I know how I can make this work, you know? But then they're told, that's not the policy. Well, what is the policy? And that's the question we ask ourselves. And to me, you know, this is good policy. The hurdles that we see can be overcome with good sound engineering and, and good sound design, and the people are there to make it happen. And the people that are there, willing to risk their money, willing to risk and provide opportunities, they're there as well and they're ready and they're doing it. They just need for us to clear the road and not to block it. Thank you, and Senator Massey, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Speaker Pangolinan. I didn't have any other, you're looking up, do you wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak before I invite the speaker to close? Flash chat. Speaker?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and I thank all my colleagues for voicing, of course, their, their concerns and even their support. And I'd just like to close with a letter and a testimony that was provided by GPA and the date of the, of the public hearing, which is May 13th. And they had three concerns as written. And the very first one, which I will make a change in an amendment to the bill, and that originally, yes, I had that a, their concern was that to make sure that they follow the procurement laws and regulations actually apply to this transaction. And if I may, on page three, then, that is included, but I will change it then that it's not then to be conducted by GPA, and the chairman had indicated this, that, you know, that this may not be an additional requirement or a burden to the department. So that I would put it then with, back to GSA. So instead of Guam Power Authority, then it'll be GSA, where it rightfully, I guess, belongs. So that's the amendment I'd like to make at this time.
On the amendment, any senator wish to be heard? Any objection to the amendment?
So that was the first concern with GPA in their letter. The second concern that they had, and they wanted a threshold to make sure, like I said, is they wanted to be able to protect their fixed costs, and they were saying that it should not be any less than 80%. And that also is on page three, line 13, which addressed GPA's concern. The third concern that they basically wanted also to make note of is that, and, you know, and I don't know the reasons, but we went ahead anyway and provided for it, but very differently from what it is that they wanted, where they wanted a comprehensive report detailing the amounts paid to GPA, amounts paid to the private sector, how much are safe. And I'm saying, I don't understand the rationale for all this, but I, but, you know, what we did do is on page five, where we did say on lines three to seven, that every year, on the anniversary of the date of the commissioning of the solar energy system, the qualified PPA providers shall report to the DOE on production system, the qualified PPA provider shall report to the DOE on production for the previous year, comparing rates charged by the qualified provider against rates being charged by the utility detailing the savings for the previous year, and GDOE shall transmit a copy of this report to the legislature. So to me, rather than, I mean, for not knowing the purposes of what it is, the GPA wants to have these detailed type of information to them, you know, instead, the most important thing here, I believe, is that it be with DOE doing just that, but with DOE, then it comes to the legislature and its public information anyway because it goes on our website. As much, Mr. Speaker, that we really, really tried to work with GPA, and we worked with the, with the private sector as well, we, and as you noted, May 13, and you've been waiting for responses. I called them into my office, they told us what their concerns are, we worked on it, and we kept on and kept on, and that's why you see again even more changes as, you know, more, we ask ourselves more questions about this bill and how this then would really truly benefit DOE. And I think the big question we all have to ask ourselves is that, as I stated before when the superintendent mentioned this, that as fuel costs go up, he said even for this year's budget, there is a need for an additional $5 million. What will it be next year? Another $5 million? Do we have an additional $5 million to appropriate again for utilities? And I feel that this is the way to go. And fortunately for us is that we have even a smaller school demonstrate savings. And can you imagine when you factor that and multiply that by the number of schools that we have on island, how much we could save our schools, how much we could save the government, and yes, how much we can save ultimately the taxpayers that would, there were, the monies would be appropriated to DOE. And as the retiring speaker said, it's unfortunate, he said that we haven't gone really far with this bill, because I want, and that's true, because there is another bill right now that I'm ready to introduce, but I want to see first of all just how, you know, this will be accepted by our colleagues. And granted, it's a policy that we're making here, but we want the best for, of course, in this particular, particularly smaller community, and that's our schoolchildren. And the savings would have to come as a result of that. Now, lastly, if I may, and I'm not going to take any more time, but out of respect, yes, to the chairman on utilities, and he asked me if I could at least set it aside now and have him continue to speak until tomorrow. That's why I'm going to ask for a recess. So that...
I'll set it aside until tomorrow.
I want to keep everything intact, if I may, so...
I want to bend the process.
So, okay, all day tomorrow, how's that then? All day tomorrow before I send it down to the reading files. Thank you then very much, Mr. Speaker.
So I understand we're now in recess and there was no closing. I want to remind everybody that we may have to be in session every day during the month of November if we do two bills a day. So we're in recess until nine tomorrow morning.